I'm meeting order. I invite you to join with me in the invitation. Dear Lord, you have shown us to respect and love of in our actions and decisions. Let us follow your direction in leading our community. Help us to realize the impact of our decisions. Show us compassion for those less fortunate. With school ending, Lord, we ask for your love and safety for our children and families this summer at home and in their travels. Protect our employees and keep them safe while doing difficult jobs. Lord, we trust in you and ask your blessings for all and us to thy service. Amen. Item number three is approval of minutes. Consider approval of the May 17th, 2021 regular and May 18th, 2021 special meeting minutes.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move into public hearings. Number four is to consider a performance incentive agreement for Project Foam. Keith, would you come up and introduce, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Project Foam is a brewery project that is looking to be a craft beer startup that will locate in the former firehouse building here near City Hall. Yes, I've got control of the mouse here. The owner of the project will be Colton Baker, who's here. If you could stand up. His brother is Austin, who's the attorney that worked on this, so it's all in the family. I'm sure his brother a discount for the legal work. And then the financier of the project or partial financier is his father Bert and his wife Tammy. They are relocating to Lake Tillery and have also purchased the former belt building. So we want to thank them for their investment in the city and we would hope that the council will take this under consideration tonight. The former fire station on Third Street, it was the most viable location for this project. We'd looked at probably a dozen or more projects or buildings for this project. There is a roof leak in this building that would cost the city anywhere between $200,000 to $400,000 to repair or tear the building down. So this cost avoidance, the best and highest use is to grab this building to the Bakers, they're going to take on the repairs and also upfit the building and invest a minimum of $1 million in this project and create 16 jobs over five years. Based on all the factors, staff recommends that you approve the incentive agreement that you have before you tonight, which has a minimum of $1 million in investment that the Bakers must put into the project. They plan to open this facility sometime in the first quarter of 2022. They are paying $25,000 on the parking lot adjacent to the building. We also have a copy of the most recent completed survey, if you'd like to see a copy of that. And the ADAR incentive also does apply. Total investment again on building outfit and repairs would be $450,000, another $550,000 or more in manufacturing equipment, furniture and fixtures, working capital of about $100,000, and then total estimated value of well over 1.2 million. Job creation initially would be five jobs with 16 jobs within five years. Total payroll will be $200,000 in year one, up to $450,000 by year five. And the company plans to double their manufacturing capacity at the facility within three years, which would generate an additional investment of approximately $400,000. Annual sales are projected at $575,000 in year one with an increase to 1.6 billion by year five. Property taxes that would be generated would be $7,680 a year for the city, $8,040 a year for the county, sales tax revenues of $1,293 a year in year one, and then increases substantially by year five. And then the payroll impact would be well over $400,000, up to $900,000 by year five. The tenure impact would be well over 7.2 billion. Again, one of the factors to consider is the city had no use for this building, the fire department had no use for it. It was damaged from the roof leak on the second floor and the roof itself. So there would be savings by the city converting this over to property of the Bakers. The Bakers would incur all the costs for improving the building and upfitting the building and it would go onto the tax rolls where right now it's a city facility, it wouldn't be on the tax rolls at all. So all in all, I think this is a win-win for us and a business that we've been looking for for quite some time, and I recommend approval.
Council, any questions of Mr. Tunnel?
I guess the comment I would have is that part of Mr. Tunnel's recommendation just now is that the city had no use for it, although it had been, that building had been a fire department downtown for years. It has been empty for, what, five years? Or longer than that?
Well, the fire department moved in 2004. It's had a couple of things in there while we were remodeling and doing this building, and then a couple other nonprofits were using it for a couple of years.
So it's been probably empty the last five or so years. And I would just make the comment that the roof, we have known that we should have done something with it over the years because we of the city, city as a whole, did not know what they would, we, and I say we, even though I really still wanted to put another fire department there, we had not done anything with it. So I just, I would say that the city did not have any maybe direct or updated plans for it.
Yes, ma'am. Further comments? Questions?
Is that the property that has mold?
Yes, ma'am. On the second floor, there's substantial water damage to the flat mold on that second floor that the Bakers will have to clean up to make it usable.
Is there any guarantee about that?
Oh, yeah, there's environmental companies that they can contract with that can clean that mold and have it all removed. Yes, ma'am.
Further questions, council? Mr. Tunnel?
Mr. Tunnel, if you will, go back to the photo and just for the public's benefit, kind of highlight the area that you're talking about for the parking, where they would be compensating the city for $25,000, just so that they won't have a general idea.
It would be generally this area here. If you're facing the building from Third Street, it's that parking lot that actually goes with the fire department building, former firehouse, approximately, I think, what was it, 13th faces, if I remember correctly?
Further questions, comments? Anyone have a question of the Bakers?
Just like to say, thank you for taking the time to come and look at our beautiful city and the diamond in the rough that you're moving into, that's been the best kept secret for many, many years, and we welcome you. And, Your Honor, there's no more questions. I'd like to make the motion that we approve.
Close the public hearing.
Sorry, it's a closed public hearing. Hold on just a minute. I have a vote here near here from staff. Anyone here here to speak for or against? This is a public hearing.
Okay, now, Chris. One, my one comment that wasn't brought out also, there are revisionary clauses in the agreement and in the deed such that the city would have right of first refusal of the property if it were to be stolen and changed hands. So there would be some protection there as far as the future of the property.
That's correct, Councilman.
Mr. Dry, now be appropriate.
Move to approve the--
Close, close, I'm sorry. I have a motion by Councilmember Dry. Motion by Councilmember Dry and second by Councilmember Aldridge. Close the public hearing. All in favor? Those opposed?
No.
Six, one. Now I have, I've been ordered to make the motion to approve it now, Mr. Dry.
Move to approve the performance agreement for Project Foam and the incorporation of the incentive to put the Alamoa Downtown area revitalization program.
And a motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Austin, anything you would like to tell us about another building you bought?
So basically found in town or the belt building itself? No, my father and I are going to work together on the belt building that's off the main street near the city's alleyway project that we're very excited about helping be the cornerstone of that. I work in commercial real estate in Charlotte, North Carolina, and, you know, being able to do that, I'm lucky enough to kind of have several clients come through that are tenants that do interesting things, you know, anything from very eclectic grocery stores, restaurants, salons, all sorts of different things that I'm going to try to utilize to bring to Alamoa. And we're just excited to be a part of that project as well.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing that move forward, Austin.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number five, public hearing, order is 2118, renaming of Rebel Road to Salvation Way. This is a public request, so there will be no staff introduction. I am open to the public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against the renaming of Rebel Road to Salvation Way, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Michael and Mayor Protem Hall and city council members. I'm Linda Turner Olinger. I live at 49554 Woodland Drive in Norwood. I'm speaking on behalf of my siblings and myself. We are the adjacent 22.1 acre affected by the proposed name change. All four of us are opposed to this name change. Harriet and I were here tonight. Maria is ill and unable to attend. She lives in Asheville. And our brother Hap is in Rocky Mount and had a conflict, but he has sent a letter--
All the council members have a copy of it.
Have a copy of that letter. And then Harriet had sent to the city manager.
They also have that?
Right. Just checking. So I'm here tonight to speak on our behalf. If you determine that the name needs to be changed, it should be by consensus of all owners of affected properties. Our family has owned the land described in deed book 276, page 849, for generations. Our grandfather, Shug Hal Turner, you guys are too young to know who he was, but he was a respected attorney in Alamoa. He practiced in what was the Cabarrus Bank Building with the clock on it. And he purchased, it was a farm at that time. Our father, Henry Hank Turner, was born and raised in Alamoa, and he lived in the house on the hill above the Pontiac dealership at Five Points. That's where he was raised. He played football in high school. His name was Hank, they called him Pinky. Some people may actually know who he was because he was a high school legend in football. And he joined the army from here. Our mother, Emily, lived in Stanley County, Norwood, until she died in 2001. Prior to her death in 1999, our mom is really the reason that we're here. Emily Willer Turner worked with the city of Alamoa, the mayor and the city council, and Raymond Allen, who was the city manager at the time, to make Rebel Road a cul-de-sac. The purpose was to reduce the traffic from the new Northeast Connector to the neighborhoods. My mom was for that. But she also wanted to have access to her property, which is what the cul-de-sac allowed. So a deed of dedication was filed where the city of, this was in 1999, was filed from the city of Alamoa agreed to accept the cul-de-sac as a part of its system of public roads. The survey was drawn and the changes were made to the existing property because at that time the road went from the Northeast Connector to Ridge Street. Although the city of Alamoa did not find the funding to actually create the cul-de-sac, and it was about that time that my mom died, so there was no follow-through from her part, and I would say that on a list of grief, that was way at the bottom. It did, the city of Alamoa did pay what was called Rebel Road and erected concrete barriers where the cul-de-sac would have been. So that's the state. So now we can fast forward to 2021, where we are now. And a church is building a facility and petitioning the city of Alamoa to change the name of Rebel Road to Salvation Way. This name identifies the public street as a driveway to their future building, when in actuality it is a public street that is a public street with access to 22.1 acres that my mother allowed the road to be closed for. Changing the name to Salvation Way in effect identifies it as a specific form of religion, edging on attempting eminent domain as well as a First Amendment violation. The name change could have a negative to Salvation Way, could have a negative impact on the potential buyers for our property. Okay, so although the adjacent landowners I'm speaking for are not averse to the name changing, we are averse to the name being changed to Salvation Way. The cul-de-sac that our mother agreed to is a city street and access to the property that we own. It should not be confused with a driveway to a church building, which is exactly what it looks like right now. In fact, they have a big sign blocking the road where you can't even go in to the public road and says, "Do not enter." So as a side note, as we puzzled over this, because we are not averse at all to the changing of the Rebel Road name to another name, cul-de-sac naming conventions usually end with a circle. So it'd be Turner Circle or, I had to drop that in. Okay. So if you determine that the name needs to be changed, again, it should be by consensus of all owners of the affected property. The way we found out about this, and in fact, the sign has been removed that used to say Rebel Road, that bothered me, but it is gone. It was, we got a letter saying there's going to be a petition to change the name. That's how we found out about it. We would be happy to meet with other stakeholders and come up with a vibrant name for a city street in Alamoa, which we feel very invested.
Council, any questions?
I would just, one question. Ms. Turner, you, I didn't catch it all, but I know exactly where you're talking about.
Yeah.
Is the property that you and your siblings own at the very end of that in the cul-de-sac itself?
So the way, the way it is, you can't really tell by the survey. So there's Northeast Connector--
Right.
And there's what used to be Rebel Road, then it's a road.
Right.
And it goes, and you make a drive if you're coming in away from town--
Right.
--toward Ridge Street.
Right.
And when you get to the end of that cul-de-sac, well, the concrete blocks, that's my, well, our property now. That is the access to our property.
So right now from, and I know exactly where you're talking about, that road is blocked off--
Yes.
Because you could tell where the church is about to start there.
Exactly.
So you're back at the very back.
Right.
Who owns that property then, directly across the street from?
They on both sides of the road and have a large portion that are joining Ridge Street.
The church.
To end them. And then you come up a little bit, the church on both sides of the road, all the way back up the connector.
That's the reason I was asking, Ms. Turner. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's clear. Okay.
There's one of the property that has a real small portion that touches on the, you're coming into the cul-de-sac, the right-hand side, between the church's property and between their property.
That's one of the ones you asked, there's actually three properties.
Land.
Your family, church, and then one of them.
And that other has also been notified.
Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak for or against? Do we have any representatives of the church here?
Yes, sir.
You want to come up?
Counsel, I'm Dr. Rick Walker. I'm the pastor of Cross Community Church, and I would just like for everyone to know that we in no way want to cause any issues with, personally, I didn't know about this would be an issue. Our church, first of all, being a church, we knew that that road would be part of our address, and we just kind of felt a little uncomfortable, you know, Cross Community Church, Rebel Road, and not, to offend anyone, we certainly don't want to do that. We struggled with several names of what to call it, and, you know, we're, we're open to anything. I mean, we were told pick a name that would fit on a sign, a road sign. The lady, gentle lady said something about calling it Circle, you know, I'm not opposed to anything. I mean, we can call it whatever you, you deem. So we just want you to know that, you know, we're open to that, and that's all.
Counsel, I reached out to 911 to clarify what may or may not be available. And cross circle, cross street, something like that, they prefer not to do because there is others just like it. They were fine with Cross Church Road, Community Church Road, something like that. That didn't have any conflict with other things in the county.
Right. Yeah, could we not?
Just go through and see if anybody else speaks, and that's what I was going to--
I think that we need to do that. I think that's--
Anyone else who cares to speak for or against?
Move the public hearing to be closed.
Just a minute.
Is there someone coming?
Ma'am, would you and the gentleman have a problem getting together and bringing that back to us?
Well, we'd be glad to, yes.
Okay. Counsel, do you want to close the public hearing or leave it open till the next meeting and let them come back to the next meeting?
We're going to leave it open.
Okay, I'll be in to entertain a motion now. Have a motion by Councilmember Whitney to leave the public hearing open to the next meeting and let them come back to us with a proposed name. Second by Councilmember Lowder. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
That would be the July meeting?
That would be the July meeting, yes.
July 12th, they need to know.
July 12th. Number six, consider request of conditional use permit, 2101, Stanley Christian Ministries for a donation drop box.
Thank you, Mayor. And we do have the quasi judicial hearing information sheet in there as well for you to kind of guide you through this process.
Let me ask you upfront before we interrupt. What triggered this? Because they've had this boxes everywhere they've ever been, had boxes in front of it. What triggered this?
I'm not sure, I can't answer. I don't know where they've had them at before. Technically, they're supposed to have one everywhere, and I think we're just trying to be consistent. We've had several that had to be removed recently from other--
I'm just trying to figure out why they were grabbed. Go ahead, if you come up while I, you, go ahead and introduce.
Probably need to do swearing in also, but this is a request from Stanley County Christian Ministries, the closing closet, and Heather Gilley is here. The address is 1324 East Main Street, which is, it is owned, General Highway Business District. And the request is to put a donation drop box there. It is an allowed use there on the property with a conditional use permit.
Kevin, before you go on, it's Stanley Community Christian Ministry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just so that we're on the same page. Thank you.
There are certain criteria for drop boxes. They need to be operated by a nonprofit group, display the owner's name and phone number, located on a developed lot that is owned or leased by the nonprofit group who maintains the boxes, and to be located in no closer to 20 feet than a public street right of way, and constructed of non-combustible material, be watertight, properly maintained. Also, certain criteria about the maintenance, the removal of donations left outside, be done within 36 hours, and not located within any parking space or landscaped area required under City of Alamoa code. The, that is it. The rest of this is for enforcement.
This is a conditional use public hearing, so it's a little different from other public hearings. You will have to be sworn in when you come up to speak, and you must be considered have standing in order to speak. If it's a question whether you have standing or not, our attorney will make that decision. If you intend to speak, come forward. Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, please. Do you swear or affirm that evidence or testimony you're about to give be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth will help you, God? Heather, you want to speak first?
I surely can. Hello, I'm Heather Gilley. I'm the executive director of Stanley Community Christian Ministry in that capacity. I'm also the director of the clothing closet, though Eva Garden is our onsite director. We have been noticing increased theft from the front of the clothing closet, where we are not receiving the donations intended for the ministry. And the donations intended for the ministry are sold at the clothing closet or given away to folks in need, but that is, 60% of our income comes from that building alone. That generates 60% of the income for all of the programs of Christian ministry, so the soup kitchens in Alamoa in Norwood, the food pantry in Alamoa in Norwood, and part of the budget expansion for whatever we're able to do in the northern part of the county. The box would simply be a metal container, eight by eight by, eight by eight by 20, that would be secured and locked, and would have a lot more space to leave donations than our current drop box, which goes directly into our building. People seem to miss the, into the building drop box. So we're hoping to have less theft from that and less police calls. So far in 2021, we've had 29 police callouts to our building. So in respect of our officers and their time, we would really prefer not to have the police responding nightly to thefts from the clothing closet of small items, but we would love to have those donations being able to be used by the ministry. So our plan is to work with the landowner next door, which we have a easement agreement that you have in front of you, and we would be cooperating with them to put the drop box there, at least renewable year to year. And we would be taking care of the parking and that. And then the next plan would be to have a young man by the name of Rylin Fur, who's JP and Julie Fur's son, has agreed to do some artwork on the box for us. This is our current window at our clothing closet, which is, just simply says, "Love your neighbor." which is, just simply says, "Love your neighbor as yourself," and it's, our artwork on the box would then match this to be warm and welcoming to our neighborhood. That's all I have.
Counsel, before we ask questions of Miss Killie, if you have any, I need to ask if you have any conflicts that you need to make us aware of?
None.
Anyone have a question for Miss Killie?
The question I would have is, how long has the clothing closet been right there? I can't remember.
26 years.
Okay, and before it was there, it was at the church?
Before it was there, it was at Five Points.
Okay.
And before it was at Five Points, it was at the church, and that was in the...
Eight nineties, early nineties?
Late eighties, early nineties, so.
So have we ever had a clo, have we ever had a drop box? Have you ever had, has the clothing closet ever had a drop?
In my tenure as the SCCF director, we have not. And right before I came on staff, we brought the motion to the city asking there not be random drop boxes all around the county because they were popping up for different locations that weren't necessarily local.
Right, right, but there's never been one at the Christian?
Other than the one that's in the building.
At that location.
And, yeah, correct, at that location.
But do you remember one at Five Points?
Yes, there was on the sidewalk, there was one on the sidewalk in front of the church.
Uh-huh, so I wonder why it was not?
I guess it was just a choice that when you remodel, you put the drop window in.
Before my time.
Before your time.
Before my time, I'm so sorry.
Anyone else have a question, Miss Killie? Mr. Stebball, Reverend?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Honorable mayor, city councilman, my name is Madison Michaels. 1325, right across the street from Stanley County Christian Ministries, and I want to applaud what a great work that they do for the community. But I do have some concerns when I found out about the drop box that's going to be there. There was a drop box at VIP Service Station down the street. I don't know who maintained it or supposed to maintain it for salvation or something. And I actually, it got so bad with clothes, trash, there was a round it. I actually had approached the manager two, three times. I'm concerned about that car to the city, East Main Street, because the church is there. We want to make sure that it looks a certain way aesthetically. So I went to him several times, and it was quite an ordeal to get him to clean up that drop box. So when I, but when I came in and now thanks for the information from the gentleman that said that it's going to be maintained, I have no problem, but I just want to make a note of the fact that any drop box need to be maintained. We're finding clothes over by our flower boxes that people are putting there now, and it's a, it's a concern when people are putting clothes across the street between the flower boxes and the trash. And we just want to make sure that the drop box is maintained. But I think you said within 24 hours, is that what you said?
Thirty-six hours.
Thirty-six hours that it will be picked up. I want to make sure that any drop box is maintained, and I just want to make a note of counsel that I'm making this observation so that, you know, it'd be a matter of record, okay?
You're exactly right, because we had this problem, and Miss Killie actually referred to it earlier. We had a lot of poor profit boxes show up in the city. And so our ordinance says it has to be a nonprofit. So our city staff does have to occasionally notify somebody, and if they don't come to get the box, we remove the boxes. But this will be on the property of the nonprofit, and they'll be responsible. So if we have problems, we'll go straight to them.
Okay. Well, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel, have any questions?
Speaking of those boxes, Mayor, how many do we currently have? I know we've done a good, established a really good job of getting a lot of those out.
I couldn't tell you how many. There's been a lot of them.
We've pulled eight or nine, I think, in the past month or so.
My question would be, if Christian Ministry decide that they want to establish these boxes in other locations in the city limits, would they have to come back and do a conditional use for each box? Or can we make it, because I can see, I would like to see this more Stanley Community Christian Ministry boxes serving local people more so than the boxes that we don't know where it's benefiting the people with.
The way the ordinance is established is there has to be, the business has to be established on that property where they're being run, and I think the main purpose of that is that there be somebody there to make sure that they're maintained and they're not just sitting out there for weeks at a time without anybody doing anything. So if they did have another property, they had a satellite somewhere around here, they could definitely do that.
So they would still have to come back for a condition?
Yeah, or if, you know, they were partnered in doing something with a church or something like that, you know, the church wanted to apply for or something.
Okay. Further questions?
Just one question, Kevin. Kevin, I saw, and this, Miss Killie has not asked for this, but I'm just seeing that this, for the conditional use permit, there is that $500 application fee.
That's correct.
Is there a way for the nonprofits here for us to disregard that $500?
Mayor, pretend that that's primarily for advertisement and a large portion of it has been eaten up in advertising costs.
That's right, and I saw that to the newspaper. Sorry about that.
Neighbors and stuff, yeah.
Thank you very much. I just, it was like, oh, my golly, take a lot of clothes to get that $500.
Anyone else have a question, comment? Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Most of the public hearing, second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve, CP 21.
We have five findings of facts we have to do first.
And Mayor, staff does have, as well as applicant, we both have our responses in there. I'm not going to read those for the sake of simplicity.
Counsel, I encourage you to look at those responses and make sure that they meet your requirements for approving these. The first one is, it is usually not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, were proposed, and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve. Second by Councilmember Whitely, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications.
Motion approved, second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, the proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number five, be in general performance with the adopted plans.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve, CP 2101.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve, CP 2101. Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to number seven, consider request for conditional use permit CP 2102 Heritage Classical Academy. Staff, would you introduce?
Thank you. Let's up real quick here. Okay. So this, the applicant is Heritage Classical Academy, represented by Jason Phipps. The proposed site is at 401 Park Ridge Road. It's tax parcel 2758. It's also known as North Almarl Baptist Church. They're site there. This is, schools as well as churches are allowed, residential district, which this is, with a conditional use permit. What is proposed is for the, yeah, yeah. It's for the school to move from its current location to this location on, at North Almarl Baptist Church and use their existing facilities. There will not be any additions built at this time. It'll be using the existing building there. And I'll scroll down, just scroll down here to show you some maps. This is the site there in the corner of Mount Creek and Park Ridge. And as is common with these traffic and other concerns do come up, and so they have provided a general traffic flow for pickup and drop off as well. So you can see how that would function on a daily basis there once the schools in session. Again, I have the responses from the applicant as well as staff here. I'd be happy to go over those if you want. Just let me know.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. And just as a public hearing, we will have the term that you have standing to speak in the case. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or evidence you're about to give be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God? Counsel, anyone have conflicts that we need to be aware of? Are you in discussion with anybody previously? Kevin, if you'll continue on?
That's really all at this point.
Okay, Counsel, have any questions for Kevin?
One question I have is with this conditional use permit for the school. Is that a limitation on number of classes, number of students? Is it just a school?
That would be for y'all to discuss if you feel that it's necessary. We are considering that at this time, yeah. We are considering that at this time. As long as they're using the established building that they've recommended there, we haven't recommended any kind of restrictions on that.
I guess just for due diligence, Heritage Classical Academy does not own the church. The church is owned by their board or whomever. Is there anyone here, or is there anyone that has signed any of this?
We should have, we should have some stuff in the document here.
I was just looking through, and I didn't see it.
Pastor Jonathan Blaylock signed, I believe he is, yeah, pastor at North Almarl.
That's on the original application?
Yeah, that's on page eight.
Right, I see that.
Assuming legally as the pastor of the church, he's represented.
Counsel, have further questions for Kevin? Mr. Phipps, you want to come up?
Good evening.
Go ahead and give me your name and address, so we can get that in the record.
My name is Jason Phipps. I live at 48050A Coffelter Row in Almarl. And I live here. So anyway, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, the city council, thank you for opportunity just to speak here on behalf of the school. I am more president of the school than co-founder, along with my wife Amy, who's here tonight. And I'll just make you a brief statement and then happy to answer any questions you have. Heritage Classical Academy is an aspiring K-12 private Christian school with the mission to provide an excellent Christ-centered classical education to the students of Stanley County. Our five core values are Christ-centered, classical curriculum, parental partnership, high expectations, and affordable access. With our income-adjusted tuition, we make a private school education available to families of all socioeconomic backgrounds in our community. We just finished our first kindergarten class in May, and we will add first grade this coming school year. We are here tonight because God has blessed us with an exceptional opportunity to lease space from North Almarl Baptist Church. Doing so will provide our school with an affordable, high-quality facility that is centrally located near downtown Almarl with room to grow. So on behalf of the Heritage Classical Academy Board of Directors, head of school, and our school families, we would appreciate the council's authorization for the conditional use of North Almarl Baptist Church for our growing private school according to section 92.074 of the zoning regulations for our 10th single-family residential district. With the support of city planning, we believe we have met all of the required standards for an affirmative decision, but more importantly, your authorization allows a positive force for good in our community to continue to grow. My pleasure.
Counsel, have any questions, Mr. Phipps?
As you grow, are you planning to just add like one grade per year, or what's your plan?
Yes, we started with kindergarten last year, we're going to first grade next year, and we'll continue to add a grade each year, and that just allows us to control and sustain the growth as we grow.
And how high are you hoping to go?
Twelve, grade 12, right. So we know that we won't be able to be at North Almarl forever, and sort of in terms of how the future looks going forward and how we manage that, you know, that will be determined as we grow. But for right now, North Almarl has tons of space to use. They're excited to be able to make better use of that space, and so we're fortunate to have their partnership.
How many students from the area?
So our first year, we had 13 kindergartners. We anticipate having a similar number this coming year, and so, and all of our kindergartners are coming back. Plus, we'll pick up some here and there, so.
So at that size, you can be there.
That's right, yeah, we have plenty of room.
Further questions? Anyone else care to speak for or against? Here and now, I entertain close public hearings. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second. Councilmember Lowry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, again, we'll go through the findings of fact. I encourage you to pull up on your computer the responses from our staff and use that in making your decisions. Number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, were proposed, and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All in favor? Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Lowry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, the proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics.
Motion to approve. Operating calendar, operating character, okay, thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember, I think I had two, Lowry I think was first. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And number five, be in general performance with adopted plans.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve, CP 2102.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve conditional use permit 2102. Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving to number eight, ordinance 2122. This again is a public hearing. We consider the annexation of 1.151 acres off of Anderson Road. Staff, would you introduce?
While he's pulling that up, within our packet, the ordinance 2122, it's within our packet, and it may be that this was the way the legal description is. Is it? Have you already asked that question?
No, I saw it.
Just FYI then, within the legal description, the word Stanley is misstated. And I love that. No, if it is in the legal and not just a typographical error.
The problem.
I would hope that it wasn't. That's right. Did you see that?
I am going to go ahead and pull up the next item here for you so that I can give you some reference as to where this is. We do have the meets and bounds, as well as a plat on there. You have the ordinance for annexation, free to consider, and this, here we go. So this is a 1.5 acre property off of Anderson Road. It is... It is, it abuts, it adjoins Grandview, just back, Grandview Meadow just back behind it there. The owners, Old South, are represented by Dave Tibbles and Todd Hicks that are requesting that a petition for annexation. Own both of these parcels right now. This parcel up front is in the city, is zoned R-10. This parcel on the rear is not. It's currently R-20 in the county. It is a donut hole, unannexed donut hole. And they're requesting that be annexed in so that all this can be subdivided together.
Counsel, have any questions? Kevin? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
So that little donut hole, Kevin, is just that 1.15 acres, right?
That's right. There is another portion of it that's under different ownership.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, David Tibbles. Partner with, a manager at Old South Land Partners. I want to first apologize for misspelling.
If it's the legal description, that's the way it is.
We employ a lot of professionals and I am not, not a spelling master. And so I will work on, in the event we have an opportunity to annex and develop another property, I will be sure, make sure that's taken care of. There's a project that we are looking to develop, six single-family lots directly right off of Anderson Road. I think you may see the plat in the package. It's a pretty simple program. We're actually, we could build more houses there as far as the density of the zoning, but just keeping things simple, lotting off the existing road allows for the future homeowners to basically have some large backyard versus the other homes around. That's all. If you have open to any other questions you might have.
Counsel, have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak for or against? I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing. Motion by Councilmember Hall, closing public hearing. Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve, ordinance 2122, you're saying.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve, ordinance 2122.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Hughes. All in favor say, any more discussion? Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 2123, is to consider a map amendment of the Anderson Road property. Same thing. Kevin, would you introduce?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the parcel that we just annexed in there, tax record 587. And it's also going to include this front portion here as well. So 2.3 acre parcel, tax record 17994. They both are owned by the applicant that we just spoke to. And so right now, this one, the one in the front is zoned R-10, and one in the back has been annexed. We do need this assigned a zoning district. They have requested R-15. And around it is primarily R-10. However, R-15 is our new zoning district. And I'm going to read a little bit of information about that, just so everybody can remember what we're doing with that. The R-15 Conservation Residential District is intended to emphasize the conservation of sensitive environmental areas such as critical watersheds, large lot, and estate-type subdivisions in areas on the edge of the city where only low levels of development is desirable. This will permit accessory buildings and structures, single-family detached homes, manufactured homes, and then CUP uses that are allowed in residential districts primarily. This is in the watershed, so it can only have three lots per acre there, so R-15 is in keeping with that and with the intent of why we, why we did this, created this zoning district to begin with. Staff does find that there would be merits for rezoning both these parcels to R-15. Would you find to be consistent overall with our land use plan?
Questions?
Will we just approve? Is that tax record 587?
Yeah, I believe so. That's it.
Just, just a number thing, okay? Within the application of this map amendment, you've got parcel size of tra, and this is, might not be anything.
The 1.2 versus the 1.5.
Right.
I think it's probably the difference between GIS and between, was actually surveyed.
Okay.
So it's probably included, the survey is always more accurate when you put that with the annexation.
So the 1.5 or the 1.2?
The 1.5, I believe is more accurate.
Okay. Then what's included right there?
Right. Yeah, we probably pulled that right off the GIS.
Further questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing. Motion by Councilmember Hall, closing public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, in your agenda, you have a consistency statement, inconsistency statement, and a zoning amendment statement, I believe it is. You had needed one of those to tell me whether approved or not approved in your motion.
Move that we approve zoning and ZNA 21-05 with the consistency statement.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve with the consistency statement.
Do you want it read or not?
That's good. I think that's good. Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving to number 10, consider a six-lot major subdivision, 2104, off of Anderson Road. Again, this is a public hearing. Kevin, would you introduce?
This is the proposed subdivision. This is flipped around a little bit, kind of upside down. You can see the former property line right here, so that'll kind of help give you a little bit of reference. Pretty simple, but we'll have six lots there. They all be size requirement. And they have submitted all the necessary materials. The minor corrections that are required would be actually, I believe that's on the setback. I think that would actually have to be reduced from what it is right now. Jay's going to take care of that. Everything else is in there. And there's not enough, there's only six single-family lots here, so it's not really enough to trigger any kind of traffic impact analysis or anything like that. These will all have direct access to Anderson Road. So will be required to have sidewalks, which can be done with V and Lu in this case. Planning Board met on May 6, and they did unanimously recommend for approval of this in the R-15 district. And staff finds it to meet all requirements as well.
Questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move to close public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, closing public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Houlson, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Approve MJSR 2104.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve MJSR 2104.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Number 11 is another public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2122 City of Alamo Budget. I will allow Mr. Ferris to introduce, and then anyone who cares to speak can come forward.
Mayor and City Council, the first meeting on May, I presented the recommended fiscal year 2122 City of Alamo budget. Since that time, council has held two work sessions, and courses, the required public hearing. So the budget remains largely unchanged, except for a couple of items that are required. As you note, at this point in the process, from the time it was presented and advertised into what is under consideration with the budget ordinance tonight. There is a change, council's request, that the funding for a public information officer be changed from potential contract part-time services to full-time. I noted at the budget work session that in the water and sewer fund, there were two vehicles that were purchased, authorized and purchased in the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2021, that have been ordered. But as a result, for reasons outside of our control, they will not be delivered until after July. So instead of having to do a budget amendment for next fiscal year, which begins July 1, we're just adding the funding that was in this year's budget to next year's budget. So it's not, it does increase the budget, but it's not appropriate funds or anything that has not previously been approved by the Mayor and City Council. And we'll also not take any further action when the vehicles come in, unlike if we didn't think this action would have to be done at that time. There's the exact same thing occurring in the electric fund for a vehicle there as well. It will not be delivered until after July 1. Was authorized and ordered this current fiscal year. It will not be here in time, so to avoid a budget amendment after the budget is adopted for that very reason, increase the budget recommendation to reflect that expenditure as well. So those are the changes to the budget from presentation to this point. And that concludes my comments. Unless counsel has any questions.
Questions, counsel? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move to close public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, closing public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, thanks motion that we approve the fiscal year 2122 budget. Second by Councilmember Lauder, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
One against. Next is agenda adjustments. Don't have any agenda adjustments?
Your honor, because of the length or the possible length of this meeting tonight, I would ask that we postpone item number 13 either until July or to another date. I just think we've got so much more that we might end up having to.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hall to remove item number 13 and bring it back at a future meeting.
Okay.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, release of calendar is in your agenda, so if you want to have any questions.
Announced delegation, number 12.
Excuse me, excuse me, I did miss one. Announced delegation Tony Lemons and Ashley Crisco to discuss closing McAllister Street.
Thank y'all for your time tonight. I'm Ashley Crisco. I live at 420 Morgan Road with my husband, Tony Lemons, and our three children. Our oldest is nine, our middle one is fixing to be two on Friday, and our youngest will be one in August. We are looking to figure out a better way for McAllister Road. We would like to have it considered, I guess, abandoned. We've been speaking with Jay at planning and zoning, and he's been helping us with this process. Since we've lived there, we bought the house in 2014. Traffic on McAllister is very busy for it to be a small gravel driveway. You have McAllister that connects Morgan and Reeves Avenue, and then you also have Ingram that connects the two roads with. From what we've been told, Ingram is a state-maintained road, and McAllister is city-maintained. We would like to have it abandoned because there have been numerous times we've been outside with our children, that people will just fly through there. And for the safety of our kids, we would like to be able to have access to the whole property, because we also own the field that's on the other side of McAllister. That way, you know, we can play outside with our kids and not have to worry about the FedEx truck, the UPS truck, or anybody coming through, for that matter, going too fast and not seeing our children. I'm not, I never came before you guys, so I don't really know exactly what to say. I'm sorry.
You're doing fine.
That's our main thing, is just for the safety of our kids. You know, if we can get that road abandoned, the city, the state, whomever needs access, there's also Ingram. So you know, if they turn down Reeves back, they can still use Ingram to cut over to go to Morgan. So there's no inconvenience for anyone, there's that alternate road. We have talked to Jay, and he said there is a sewer line that is actually in our property through the ground somewhere. I'm not sure where.
It runs down the center of McAllister.
Right, down the center.
And it's like we told him, if we can have it abandoned, if the city ever needs to do any digging, any maintaining, it's, we don't mind if anybody digs. It's just, we just want to have it abandoned. That way we can connect our entire apartment together.
Counsel, this is a little bit of a different situation than we've ever had, I guess, before. Most time you're looking at abandoning a road that has never been opened. This is an open road with a sewer line. Counsel, this will be your decision, whatever you decide. Staff has recommended that we not close it, so what's your, have any questions?
I've got a couple of questions. First of all, how many, how many votes reside on McAllister Street?
No, no one has an address.
There's no property on McAllister.
And the second question is, how much traffic comes through on a daily basis?
Quite a bit. I have work at the urgent care here in town, so my schedule differs every week. On my days off, I'm home with our kids when school is not in, so I have all three. And you can have anywhere from 10 to 20 cars come through. I know that sounds like a big number, but it's true. And it's not always anyone who lives on Morgan or who lives on Reeves. It can be a part I've never seen before. And we have talked, he has talked to the people who also live on Reeves. Everyone, this, abandoning the road is not going to inconvenience the other residents that have the Reeves address, because they still have their specific driveways. They will have the gravel driveway on their section, so they can still get in their driveways no problem. And they have front driveways as well.
So follow up to that, ma'am. So we've got the picture. You don't have it up there.
Oh, sorry.
Right here. No, 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 that's fine. Your house, if I'm looking that square, your house faces Morgan.
Yes, ma'am.
Faces Morgan. And it appears that there is a house behind your house that faces Reeves.
Yes, ma'am.
That your properties butt up against each other.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? You currently own a piece of property where your house is and the property on the other side.
Yes, ma'am.
What is your address?
420 Morgan Road.
Morgan Road, it's not McAllister.
Yes, ma'am.
There's nobody that lives, there's no man.
Everything, 420 Reeves.
Like, that's what I was thinking. That's what it looked like. I just wanted to hear that from her.
Is Ingram also brown?
Yes.
Ingram is gravel.
Yes, ma'am. Both of them are brown.
The one concern I have, I live back behind you. And I've been up and down Ingram and Morgan before, the house before, looking for our dog, however.
I hope your dog's not the one that comes to my house a lot.
Was he riding by?
Exactly. If you think about it, and look at the map, and proceed west, there's 250 proposed housing developments there. And that potentially, in my mind, could create even more cut-through traffic. When you're trying to cut down Morgan, you cut down Reeves to try to take a shortcut through. When you do things like that, you think about it. And, you know, I understand what staff is saying, but also, you're going to have enough on Morgan Road, and I would personally not, I'd like to see it closed, so that nothing is going to continue to focus around you with even more traffic.
Correct.
And that's going to funnel traffic onto.
It can very well be.
So just throwing this out there, if that were closed, if it were closed, it would close, propose then from Morgan to Reeves. And what does that do? Because it looks Because it looks to me that facing Reeves, there's a house on either side of McAllister.
Yep. Same direction.
Except at their end, there's only a house on one, and they haven't planned the process through.
Kevin, wherever you end. Since this is a private request, we have not notified any property owners by letter that this was coming before us.
I don't believe so. We would have to set a public hearing if Council wanted to go forward, at minimum, post the property, and also send letters to those adjoining McAllister, and then the city attorney may have some other, you know, to add to that.
So if this is going to move forward, it will have to be August. At the July meeting, Council will have to adopt a resolution to what they intend to close, and then will advertise for four weeks, have the public hearing, and then in August, Council would make the appointment.
And that would be, our August meeting is?
Second.
August 2nd.
Council, you want to make some comments about how they feel?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think, I think in fairness to, I appreciate your concerns, and you explained it nicely, but I think in fairness to the, to the both of the folks who have adjoining property, I think it's all right. I know you want them as soon as possible, but I think we have to do our due diligence, and we got to make sure that we notify anybody else that would be affected by this in regards to property owners. Give them a chance to come and speak before us if what.
Staff would also like a chance to, we're working with the developer, another phase of Morgan Hills down there, and they are proposing to align with this right here, this road, and we haven't gotten that far into it, but DOT has looked at that and has also talked about some, some form of signalization or traffic calming there or something like that as well, but that could, that could play into this as well, so we'd like to get more information on that, too.
And McAllister Road or Ingram?
With McAllister. Can't really align with Ingram, because there's a house, there's a couple houses there right now.
They're considering putting a signal at our.
I don't, yeah, I don't know what they're going to do, but they're looking at it, the vacant piece of land down there, or some road going down there, going into that portion of the property, so.
I guess my thing I don't understand is why, if that's what they're proposing, why would they not put it at the Ingram, where there's two open builds where there's no homes?
Well, it would actually be.
There's two houses right there.
It would actually be in front of McAllister and the field that's across from us, or that barn is.
It's the very early stages of this, we've only seen preliminaries, so we really can't say too much, but we would probably like to take a look at that and bring that to y'all as well.
If we worked, so based on that, if we were then to have at the July meeting, to adopt the resolution, then to have a public hearing, would you have enough time? Because for us to do that, we've got to do it in that step.
Yeah, we'll, staff will try to prepare whatever we can for you before then.
Will you have something from DOT by then?
I don't know for sure. I don't know for sure.
We, we tentatively say that, but if you say you do not, we can delay it.
Okay.
Okay. Council, are we agreeable with that?
Yep.
Because I think we definitely need to something from DOT if they're talking about expansion.
What is the speed limit on Morgan Road?
45.
It's 40.
Council, I'd entertain a motion then, that we delay this until staff brings us back a recommendation from DOT and tells us to move forward. If Council's okay.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Dry, a second by Councilmember Lauder, further discussion.
Yes, so that motion is not exactly what I heard us doing, okay? That motion is, I hear Kevin talking to DOT and waiting to hear what DOT wants to do or is suggesting they do, and what I thought we were doing was getting a resolution drawn up to have a public hearing. I guess, what I heard first thought was, was not what this included.
We could do that, but if you don't know what DOT's going to do, why not adopt the resolution first?
Well, then, I guess, could they coincide at the same time? DOT does not need to drive this. I mean, I'm glad it's all been brought up at the same time, but it looks like to me they could coincide that. And Brett, what are you thinking there? Do we need to?
So there's going to be future development on the road, you probably need that information before you have a public hearing, and so I would go with the motion that was critically stated, to wait on DOT's analysis of what they're going to do with the road, and then set the public hearing if it's something that is still feasible to do.
Okay. I guess I just did what I heard was two different things, so then that's fine. That's the motion.
All in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. You can get back with Jay or Kevin, either one, and maybe they'll know more about it as we move forward. If we're going to have to prove a subdivision on the Morgan roadside, it makes sense to do it all at one time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Recessed calendar is in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Now we'll move to the consent agenda. Number 15, a resolution establishing annual street assessment rates. Number 16, a resolution adopting electric rates for fiscal year 21-22. Number 17, a resolution adopting water and sewer rates for fiscal year 21-22. Number 18, a resolution adopting water and sewer tap fees and water meter fees for fiscal year 21-22. Number 19, a resolution approving the salary schedule and compensation philosophy. Number 20, consider easement for 124 South First Street. Number 21 is approval of fiscal year 2021 annual update in agency plan in Department of Public Housing. Number 22 is adoption of the city's strategic framework. Number 23 is consider road closures for the Torrey Hills 5K and cycle tour. Number 24 is consider road closure for Stanley County Historical Society. Number 25 is consider road closure for Forest Hills July 4th parade, and number 26 is a proclamation to honor the 50th anniversary of Stanley Community College. Does anyone have anything you want to remove?
I'd like to pull off 24 and 26 to be individually discussed.
24 and 26. I have a motion by Councilmember Hall, pull off 24 and 26.
Sir.
Second by Councilmember Whitton, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 24.
Your Honor, and I just would like, and the reason I did that, I saw folks out in the audience saying, why is she doing that? I'm doing that because I think this is an appropriate time to start the PR on this event on Saturday, August 28. And a lot of times when things are on a consent agenda, people aren't really going to pay attention to them. So I want people to pay attention to it. Saturday, August 28, is International Play Music on the Porch Day, and the Historical Society is wanting to do that, do such an event at the Snug's House, and have got it arranged from 10:00 AM in the morning until 10:00 PM that night, closing a portion of Third Street for parking and for, they're going to have music, live music on the porches of both the Snug's House and the back porch of the Mark's House, and glad that they're doing this, all types of music. And if there's anybody out there that's got some music they'd like to, like to present, contact Ken or Edna Harkey. I move approval of 24.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, approve number 24.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And number 26, a proclamation to honor the 50th anniversary of Stanley Community College.
And I just wanted that pulled off by itself, because of what it has to say, and that starting on July 16th or 18th or something like that, there's going to be a kickoff, July 15. There'll be a kickoff for a year celebration that the community college is having, and the community college, you know, been here 50 years, and been a lot of folks that graduated from there, and a lot of good that college on the hill has provided, and I just wanted to make sure that people understood that this was about to be a big event. Move and approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving into new business, number 27, the Alamooral Business Center bids.
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Just to make sure everyone's on the same page, as I understood, the motion by Councilmember Hall, the second by Whitley, was to approve the consent agenda without 24 and 26. Is that, would it take place?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make, make sure.
And then we talked about 24 and 26 individually.
So all the other items have been, were approved in that motion? Sure, thank you.
Steve, are you hiding back there somewhere?
I am, sir.
Come on forward. Council, you have in your agenda package the bids that we received for the business center, and I'll let Mr. Chambers make comment on it.
Can I flip up or not? She had our summary letter, you saw this, right? Okay, so normally we would do a firm recommendation award, but this has a base bid, a bid alternance for council's consideration, so based on whatever combination, you decide what determines the low bidder. So the next page was just a summary, certified bid tabulation of the seed bids, the documentation was submitted verbally. And then we get to the summary of award sheets, and the sheet behind that, maybe not right behind, is the map, so we can walk, walk through what the alternates are. So we have base bid, which was, oh, did we flip the map up, or do we need to do that?
Kevin, do you have it? Keith, do you have that loaded where we can bring it up?
Okay.
But staff, you got it in your agenda.
Yeah, I'll talk you through it. The one is pulling up through the agenda system on the screen that's in front of you.
So base bid was all roadway grading, this in blue and dash blue. Paving, curb gutter on dark blue. The yellow is the Highway 52 turn lane improvements and cattle crossing closure, there's a cattle crossing there under the highway. And the green sewer that's solid is all in the base bid. Alternate 100 was the rest of paving and connection to Henson Street, so you'd have a full surface road all the way through. Alternate 200 was upsizing of water lines from 12 to 16 inch. And alternate 3 was continuation of sewer up the northeast to the back side of the Walmart proper. So apparent low bidder on base bid only was JT Russell and Sons. Base bid plus alternate 100, which is continuation roadway, JT Russell and Sons. Base bid plus 100 and 200 is JT Russell, and the rest after that was NJR Group, any other combination. That makes sense? We can give out the combinations and.
I think, I just, I would like to go back through that one more time, because we're talking about, we're talking about base, we're talking about 100, 200, and 300, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And you can do any combination of those three, so we listed all possible combinations.
Right, but then you said basin A is JT, basin, basin 2, or basin 100 is JT, basin 200 is JT, basin 300?
Basin 300 alone would be NJR, so.
Okay.
Right.
So NJR would not be in?
It'd be, well, you're going to pick one contractor based off base, and any, any combination of alternates you select, so we won't have two contractors, just one, so.
Is this, I know we got grant money, correct?
We did for the road.
Okay, for the road. And how much was that?
70.
750,000 dollars.
Okay, and so this that we're looking at currently is for road and much more?
It's, it's road all the way through, connecting to Henson Street, if you take the alternate, and then the sewer, you can see all this, Chuck, were you showing the 300 A?
Yes, so this is, this is 300, which is gravel sewer up the right side. So base bid was road paved, everything finished, turn lane, sewer to the park, continue. 100 continued the paving, grading will be accomplished with the base bid, so this road bid is graded, but 100 would continue paving and connection to Henson, Henson improvements. 200 is just upsizing water facilities, just for business park, doesn't hurt to do that. 300 is just laid of sewer.
So base is paving until the broken line, but grading the rest?
Right, it all graded out, the grass.
But paved where it's, um.
We stopped paving.
Okay.
And we stopped here because there was potential, this is a good site, and there was, there was an intersection here, which kind of, it's still there, but it's not at the base.
Ultimately, if, in the future, there could be an intersection put in there to clean this other area, if that's what was planned.
This was the, this is the best property on the site in terms of building site, so if, if Rick Rees got a cul-de-sac that came in from multiple small lots, but this could be one big development, so we'd like to let that out.
On the initial, on number two, where's the 12-inch water line, and then we went to a 16?
Right.
The reason for that?
Was business parks anticipating you probably have some fire flow requirements when you start building bigger buildings with fire penises that are in use right now? So 16 will help, I think, long-term with fire flow capability inside buildings, so. It's not absolute, it's fed by 12 today, because 12 comes down 2027, takes a left, down Henson, and actually takes a left down Bird. So 12, we have to go up to Bird, no, is there any, Bird, hit the 12-inch.
We've talked, we talked about in the past, Mr. Dry, I don't remember if this was when you were gone, we may ultimately have to put a tower on that property, and that's where I think we got to come about, the 16 made more sense, if we're going to have to put a water tower up there, it made more sense to have a 16-inch plate.
Yeah, and I think given where we are, those are the types of things we need to know that we do do, versus having to come back around and take a snap and cut again.
And we're kind of, I think, in a little bit of an unusual situation. If you compare this to the bids that are estimates that Steve gave us, they were pretty accurate. In fact, sometimes the estimates were a little high.
Yeah, we did.
But he gave us a safe estimate, but now we got to think of where we're at as we move forward. We're in a situation now where all this ARP money is being turned loose, and a lot of it going to be spent on infrastructure, and then if an infrastructure bill comes in later, I think we will struggle to ever see these prices again. Council, they just decide how they want to move forward. If you're asking me, I think we move forward and do the entire road, and you can decide on the sewer if you want to, but I think the sewer, you'll never put it in at that price again.
So 300 A, you take the sewer and hold the blocks?
Not hold the blocks, but it does get the, you're not seeing the topography on here, but this is going up all the major draws to the property sector. Legs off of this would get you to the different, where buildings develop.
So Steve, what you're saying is 300 A would get us, get us the prime real estate on the whole project?
Well, this is the prime over here, so the base bid gets you to the prime.
Okay.
Right here. None of it's not prime, this is the more level, more conducive for a big building site. This is a little more topography up here, more steep.
So I would ask Council, at least, I have to see things, numbers in front of me. Page one of one, when it gets you all of, um.
Your own best one?
The combination, no, it's the combination.
The summary.
That's what it looks like, it's, yeah, that's what, I, I think that's something we've got to look at, is we, and before I go into that, the first time that bid, that bids went out, we were needing to get three, and we got two, right?
Correct.
And then we went back out again, and we got?
Two.
Two, again.
Right.
I, I think we've got to look at this sheet, because there's eight different combinations, at least that's what Steve's given us, is eight combinations that are highlighted there. I know the mayor just mentioned about all the ARP money, and yes, the ARP money could be, but I don't want us to go into, personally, don't want us to go into deciding on either bid, or the bid, or whatever we're going to do based on using all the ARP. I just don't want us to do that. I think we've got to look at how are we going to fund it, and what is it we're going to do, taking into consideration what Ben just said. We probably don't need to do something halfway if we're going to do what we might as well do the lower of it at the upfront, because like the mayor said, probably won't get those prices again. get those prices again. But there's a lot of different, a lot of ifs, ands, or buts here in the mention of ARP, I don't even, at this point particularly, don't even consider that.
How do you think we only got two bids?
We're, we're seeing that on multiple public projects lately. So we had a public bid in Old World, nice waterline project, one bidder. The sewer rehab project in Norwood last week, two bidders. I think sometimes the construction market's pretty flush. Materials are short, utilities, ductile iron's not, and asphalt's not, and gravings not, but anything PVC related, it, you can't get pricing, you're probably in the six months out to get it, so. We're seeing it on a lot of projects. In fact, we haven't had one yet, the last couple months that had three bidders, anything down the county.
Anywhere else?
I don't know about, I don't know about other places, but again, Old World and Norwood, we just did bids in the last two weeks, so didn't have enough bidders.
And I think that's gonna be a struggle with all this coming up online.
It would work.
We're gonna struggle to get contractors.
I think the longer we wait, the greater the demand, the less the supply will be, and even in our business, we've seen that, that trying to get stuff has been extremely difficult. Building materials are out of the roof, it's just unbelievable, you know? You know, I agree with this all, but at the same time is that we've got an opportunity to see things that probably lawyers, we're gonna see them in this regard, which is totally different from what the world is today, and it's, deserves our particular, uh, look at moving this thing forward.
And for fair record, these are the tightest bids I've ever received, so 12, on the base bid, it's $12,285 difference between first and second. That is, you don't, that's unheard of, so in, in the total, if you do all the alternates, it's a $100,000 difference, so.
Right.
Very.
So Steve, if I may, just to help my brain, because it's definitely not an engineering brain, um, on, on, to Councilmember Hall's point, on page one of one, just so I can understand this, number one, it says base bid only, okay? And we have two numbers there. So when I reference the map down in front of us, that base bid is the dark blue line.
You're on this map? You're on this?
Yes, I'm on page one of one, and it has five million, yeah, okay.
So base bid is, we'll start here, turn lane.
Okay.
Improvements of 52.
Okay.
All the grading.
Okay.
All the water.
Okay.
Paving to here.
Okay.
Sewer outflow, sewer flowing this way.
Right.
Start, sewer all the way to here, and then to this little lake.
Okay.
Is that all in one base?
That's all.
That's base.
That's all base?
That's all base bid?
Right.
Okay, and then when it says base bid plus alternate 100A, what is that?
100A is the continuation of curb and paving. And the Henson Street final connection to Henson.
Okay. I'm following you now.
200 would take this water line.
All right.
Instead of getting a 12, it'd be a 16.
Okay.
And then 300 is adding this sewer leg.
Okay.
Into the project.
Okay.
Everything's permanent.
Right.
Is that essentially all the infrastructure except layer?
It is, other than, um, you're not seeing the Leonard Avenue connection at some point.
Right.
This sewer actually continues on, on around and picks up these properties through this one. So there's more sewer, but this gets predominantly the back lawn in to the park.
So can we, do we have to, Mayor, is this, do we have to take all of this? Can we take a piece of it?
Capital can choose to do it in any way they want. I would, uh, what you're asking for tonight, what we're asking for tonight is just decide on your bids. As far as pay, paying board, Mr. Ferris has made recommendations to you. As we move forward later, talking with the APR money, you can decide then how you want to use it. You don't have to make that decision tonight. But if you did all of the infrastructure, water, sewer, uh, you would lose only about half of the APR money, because you're still gonna have a good piece of APR money to spend on other items if you did that, or what Mr. Ferris has recommend, recommended to you tonight.
Just want to get down to that point, we still have a lot of flexibility with ARP money, as far as, you know, not using half of it, I think.
I'm not sure I follow the question.
So I mean, I don't want to commit.
All right, well, we've talked about using it in the past, but if council doesn't want to commit to it, I think, with what I know about ARP, I have vetted with, um, an engineering firm we use on other, um, clean water revolving loan grant projects, that this will qualify, and that's one of the stipulations for the ARP money, that for water and sewer lines, it has to qualify for that revolving loan. So it appears that it is an eligible project. If we use ARP, as the mayor said, based on the bids, even the full water and sewer bids, it still doesn't probably come to quite half of what we anticipate getting for the ARP. Now, if that decision's gonna be made later, that's fine, we still, as we know, we've been planning for this for several years. So that's why I tried to kind of detail in my agenda comments, so as it relates to water and sewer, we have some cash contribution that we can make to the project, if it is not ARP money, but as we talked about, we have more water and sewer infrastructure needs than we have money with ARP, so it's, it becomes one of those, you know, out of which pocket do you want to pay for? But nonetheless, uh, we have an ability to make a cash contribution, and the same applies to the general fund, make a partial cash contribution, and then also, if we don't use ARP money to borrow from another fund at about 1.5% interest, and then pay ourselves back interest greater than what it is earning in the bank sitting there drawing interest on that reserve at this point, and, and then, but also at a lower interest rate than we could borrow from a bank. So the borrowing fund comes out ahead in that manner, and the receiving fund does as well.
Well, I'm, you know, in agreement with the mayor, but we probably need to go ahead and do as much as we can, because it seems like we're getting closer together with some kind of infrastructure bill, and it'll take probably a while to put that together. We just got two bids on this, and I was there. So if we wait, you know, we may not get any, or it might be much more expensive, so, you know, I'm sort of supportive of trying to do as much of this as quick as, as we can, so.
I think before us tonight, though, is just the designation of the bid, bid allocation, it's not how we're gonna pay for it.
Tonight, we need to accept the bids.
We need, and to decide which one we're honoring. So, you know, this talking about the $4.75 million, it's not really on the table tonight.
Right, you can make that decision at a future meeting. We just need to accept the bids tonight.
Because when we started this project, the ARP was not even an idea out there, because COVID wasn't even an idea, so, you know.
And that goes to my point, which I wanted to clarify, is that even if ARP money had not come our way, we still have the ability to fund the project.
Yeah, right.
Counsel, what you wishes?
So if we're looking at this, and we are, JT Russell, with all three of options, 100, 200, 300, is it the 5117, correct?
No.
No, no, no.
That's gotta be added to it.
You gotta add all three of those too.
That's base.
Got you, all right. Look at this. It's a little small.
Let me make it larger for you. Do you? I can.
Yeah, it's, uh, I'm blowing the glasses up against her, too.
Get your ringtone down, and you can have that page one of one.
Counsel has discussed doing all of it. If that's what your intention is, you would be looking at number eight, the base bid plus alternate 100, 200, and 300, at 6.486, 355, 40. And it would be, NJR would be the low bidder.
I would make that motion, Your Honor.
Have a motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Hold your hands up, please. Okay, two against. Number 28, consider approval of contract with Chambers Engineering. Steve, can you tell us what that contract covers?
Yes, sir, it includes, uh, when we first did this, we had the full contract, so we took out everything after bidding, so now we'll bring it back. Construction face services, which are standard EJ CDC, our contract service, uh, it's General Administration of Construction Contract, providing resident, resident project representative services, construction materials testing, which concrete soils will provide out. But we'll do a pre-construction conference, we'll visit the site, make observation, construction. We review all the work, we provide field orders, clarification to the documents, process, change orders, work orders, we review shop drawings, so, you know, shop drawings are deemed that is incorporated into the project, that's the material, we approve what that is, it is consistent with the contract documents. So manholes, pipe, bounds, fittings. We process all the contractor's application for payment before sending to you. We certify contractor's completion documents, and then the resident project representative would be Randy Gibson, so he's basically on site, um, as needed typically, you know, more than half time to full time, depending on how the work's going. Construction material testing is, like I said, all earthwork, subgrade, concrete, stone density, asphalt density, so full coverage of the construction face of the project. And resident project representative and construction material testing, all time and expense, so.
Looking at appendix two, the scheduled hourly rates, we've got a number of different billing classes within the.
Correct.
And you're talking about the principal, the prince, the person that would be there, you just said Gibson, where does he fit in this?
He's RPR, Resident Project Billing Class One.
Okay.
That's fully loaded, that's his vehicle travel time.
And so when, so this is an hourly rate there, and you're saying that right now half time, is that what you're thinking?
Well, he's, at least, probably, so, depends on the contract for rest, he's not every day if the work doesn't require. But he'll usually stop by every job every day, depending on his time he spends.
Questions, counsel?
Sue, Brits, review contract?
She has.
She has.
I'm gonna entertain a motion.
Subtle.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to approve the contract with Chambers Engineering.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Two against. Number 29, consider bids for bulk chemicals for city treatment plants. In your agenda, you'll see two different low bidders depending on the chemical. Staff has recommended Chemical Trades US LLC for 468 dry tons of liquid alum at 292.5 dry ton, and Univarm for 209 dry tons of liquid caustic at 432 a dry ton.
Motion, approve staff's recommendation.
Motion by Councilmember Whitley to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 30, discussion of possible changes to the nuisance compliance timeline. Mr. Aldridge, I believe you asked to talk about that.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Your Honor. You know, it's, it's that time of the year where, you know, the grass is growing like crazy, and as you ride around, you don't have to ride too far to find, uh, lots of high grass, and it's, it's growing like leaps and bounds. Right now, the way it stands is, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it has to reach 15 inches before it's in violation. Once it reaches 15 inches, um, you, we send out, the city sends out, staff sends out a letter, and then the owners have, uh, I believe it's another 14 days to have the, the grass cut.
Yeah, 15 days.
15 days, I think, or 15 days to have the grass cut, so, um, what's happening is, once the grass hits that 15 inch mark, uh, if it has another 15 days to grow, and we have rain, by the time it's, by the time it's getting cut, it's six foot tall. So I think it's good, and I appreciate staff going, going out and kind of doing a, an assessment, or looking at other communities and seeing what they do, so. I'm, I'm still, you know, if, if my fellow council members have looked at all those, you know, some of them, some of the cities municipalities on that list are eight inches, 10 inches, 12 inches, I'm fine leaving it at 15 inches. My recommendation would be that we change the ordinance, um, adjust it down from 15 days to seven days. Anybody that's, anybody that owns a property, once it gets to that 15 inches, um, you know, that's, that's when neighbors really start complaining, it really starts looking bad, so, um, I'd like to get feedback from the other, other members, uh, in comments.
I agree, because by the time it gets to that and we wait 15 more, um, in the last 10 days, I think I've made three or four to Mr. Ferris, and they have been, city has gone out and cut several of them, or at least sent letters, so I agree that just giving them more time is just.
I mean, I don't want to burden staff, because I know you guys have a lot going on, and, and as I look at some of those municipalities, they're, you know, eight inches, I mean, I think that's, that's, you know, that's somebody went out town for a weekend, hadn't had a chance to blow their grass, but once it gets up to 15 inches, I'd like to see us make the adjustment, they have only seven days to get it moved.
Ms. Birch, are you comfortable with seven days for post office delivery and all that?
So I would recommend, the letters, when they go out, it's seven days from the date of the letter, and so you have to also consider the time of the mail, one or two days, and if you're on vacation, that's five days, so that's a little short, particularly in the summertime with multiple vacation. I would recommend 10 days, um, if it's gonna go down seven, just seems very short.
Counsel?
I'm fine with that.
So what we do is shorten it to 10 days or 15?
You can shorten the grass length also, um, do either or, or both.
Yeah, I, from, from a staff perspective, um, I, I can see both sides of, of each of these, um, I, I would recommend that, like you said, if you stick with, shorten it something, it'd be the, the time period and not the, the grass height, because I, I am concerned about staff being able to, we already have enough problems catching everything as it is, mostly call-ins, but we will have a lot more, and we'll probably get a lot more complaints, and you guys are probably hearing a lot more too, from, from neighbors and stuff, if you make it eight inches or 10 inches or something, so. But I, to, to what Brits said, 10 days would probably be good, because then we'd have a few days for mailing, and then there would be at least a week to take care of it.
Mr. Aldridge, if that's what you wish to do, we'd entertain a motion that we do 10 days, but direct staff to bring us back an ordinance at our next meeting.
Absolutely.
And I have, if we're gonna do that, I have a couple other things I'd like to change now, I'd like to present to you as well, it's, it's related to the, to the grass stuff. Some things that we noticed that other municipalities are doing, and we noticed we would probably want to change too.
Sure, okay, what were they?
Related to, um, natural vegetated states, um, what, you know, what do you do if property is to remain vacant, and they want to go back to a wooded state or something like that, how do you accomplish that?
Anything else?
That's interesting.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it happens, I mean, it's, you know, somebody has an acre lot that they used to have a house on, it's no longer there, you know, there's nobody around it, I mean, what do, what do you do then, so?
And that's been a discussion of course.
It's been, yeah, absolutely, and I think we'd have some kind of board that's fair, I think there ought to be, you know, separation from other homes, and, you know, what actually constitutes that, can't just let a bunch of weeds grow about there, you need to probably plant something, so.
Anything else you want to bring to counsel?
That's, that's, that's most of it.
What about how dwellings that are not occupied, where the shrubbery vegetation has exceeded the height of the house, and door covered up, the sidewalk, would that be addressed at what you're looking at possibly?
We, we could, that's a little, probably a little bit trickier. It's covering the sidewalk right now, then, then that's, that's public right of way, so we can definitely take care of that. When you're talking about the walkway to the, the house.
The walkway to the house, I mean, you can't even do up the steps on this one, it's, 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 it's gone.
Yeah, uh, it's a, it's a. Yeah, it's a, it's a little trickier, but, I mean, there are a few places that have tried to take staff with that, and we can take a look at that too.
I'd like to see that.
Mr. Aldridge, do you include that in your motion to let staff bring us back some recommendations?
I would, absolutely.
You can have a motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
By the way, 110th Market Road is in violation.
I could write it down.
Six twenty-six more seconds to...
Thirty-one, consider surplus donation to Four Rivers Consignment. Counsel, we received a request for the items that I mentioned in the agenda here from the Four Rivers Consignment for use to enhance, the wording was, they want to enhance a person's ability to do jobs, or basically, that's the best way I can put it. They are a nonprofit that, they're the Me Am I Project also, the one that does the education and what else, Mr. Townsend, at the Whaddell Center?
They renovated the library.
They renovated the library and all that. They've asked for that. If you remember when we took over that building, one of the arrangements was up front that the lady that owned it could take the items out of it, because we had no use for them before we bought it. But now we own it, and it's in our hands, so they've come back, or the Four Rivers Consignment has come back and asked for that. The reason that we probably got the request is, the lady that owned the building also works as a partner for Four Rivers Consignment. Now, how do you wish to proceed?
Your Honor, I think it's, it's not clean, okay? I, my, I mean, I understand, I go down to Four Rivers Consignment on a regular basis. But it is, it is ours now, and we have a surplus right now that is being sold. If it were not, and this is just messy, it's messy that we would be giving it to a nonprofit, even though I understand that, I mean, they're good, they're good folks, and they do good work. But it's not clean. And I, if it wanted to have, if the owner wanted to have given it to them before we bought the building, it would have been hers to do so. And I may be the only person that feels that way, but it's not, it's not, it's messy. And I don't like things that are messy.
Did we give her a set deadline to remove all personal items when we bought it?
It was when we changed property, changed handles, something changed handles.
It was a long time, though, in there.
It took a long time.
It took a long time.
So it's too late to just say, hey, come get your rest of your items?
From that point, I think so, yes.
Personally, I, unlike Councilmember Hall, I wouldn't want to deviate from our standard process of just declaring items surplus, and, you know, because I just think it's the cleanest route not to avoid any conflicts from a city standpoint.
I love what they do, I love the idea, but it's just not clean for me.
I agree.
Yeah, now, it is a little different from when we donated, I think, fire uniforms or something to the school. Now, that's a little different, you know, but I don't recall us doing anything different other than, you know, for a nonprofit, or anything of that nature, other than from surplus auctions, you know, declaring items surplus.
Have we donated any other surplus items to the nonprofit?
I can't remember.
The closest thing I can think of is things like Councilmember Townsend's talked about, the community college, the high school, you know, other quasi-governmental nonprofits. You know, there's varying levels of nonprofit, and the ones that are, you know, quasi-governmental, that are, you know, funded at least one step away from direct taxation with public money, you know, those sorts of things. But this is just a strictly voluntary nonprofit. So I can't recall anything like that, doesn't mean we haven't, but...
Just feels like something's not right.
If somebody, because it's a close bid, isn't it, Ronnie, when it goes, when it goes...
When it goes to surplus auction, yes. Well, it's public auction, you'll know the bids, but that's the way we do it, all public auctions.
So, unless I'm on the...
Letting, yeah.
You know, if somebody wanted it, they could go on and try, I mean, to, you know, it may not bring a lot of money, it may, might not, but I just would rather than...
I'll entertain a motion.
To consider it surplus donation, is that what you're thinking, or just consider it surplus?
Well, Mr. Ferris can do the surplus declaration. We just need to turn down the request, if that's what counsel wishes to do.
Okay, so if we don't do anything, if we just say that it's, because it's already surplus, right? Is it already surplus?
He hasn't designated it and put it up for sale yet.
But has it, it's not been designated surplus yet?
No, anything under $5,000, I can declare surplus. This has not been declared surplus. It's something we will have to deal with if it does not get disposed of this route.
Right. So you just need a motion to not accept?
If we're not going to do it, then I need a motion to turn it down.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 32, consider reappointments and appointments to the boards. Our planning and zoning board, we have Dean Spade, Kent Harkey, and John Sullivan. All of them aren't interested in a reappointment.
There's, they have approval of our way.
Sorry.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Historic Resources Commission, two of them do not want to be reappointed. Rob McAtire does wish to be reappointed.
Move to reappoint Rob McAtire.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Lauer, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, you have one that does not wish to be reappointed. We have Ron Lofton and Sean Baldwin that wishes to be reappointed.
And then there's one more, Your Honor, that we've got an application within the, within the attachments.
We do.
And I do not know this person, but it's within the body of the attachments. Joshua, I don't even want to take a chance.
Looks like Brosius or something. I'm not familiar with him either.
I, I don't know this person, B-R-O-S-I-U-S.
His first request was the Parks and Recreation Trust Advisory Board.
He just did this on May 19th, and he worked for the community college. So listen, I'm of the opinion, if somebody wants to do something, let them go.
Yep, absolutely.
So we put his name on there for that part.
So is that a motion to approve all?
Yes, it is.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve those three, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Move to the Tree Commission, Elaine Nelson, she's interested in reappointment. And we have an application at your desk tonight for Catherine Regina Kimery Breeden. I think a couple of us here know who that lady is.
Move approval of both of them, and the caveat being that the Tree Commission is, I understand, you do not have to live within the City of Alamo.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, that leaves us with three vacancies, I believe. We're going to need to come up with a couple with the Historic Resources. And we were having some discussions, Ms. Hall earlier, she's going to reach out to a couple people she knows that may be interested. And we also...
I think it was Martha.
Ms. Hughes, excuse me, Ms. Hughes. And we need one for planning and zoning board adjustment. We have the vacancy there, counsel.
Two for HRC.
And one for planning and zoning, counsel.
And I would just, once again, say to anybody watching this or listening live, if you'd like to volunteer, please fill out an application online.
I believe we have at least one interested for both of those, but we're trying to follow up on that right now.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, that handles that. Moving to come around the table, first, I want to know if he's here, Chief Britton here?
Yes, he's back there.
Chief Britton, come up, I want to recognize you. I believe you completed a training that you were selected to participate in. Tell us a little bit about it.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel. It is Fire Service Chief Executive Officer. It's a program that is orchestrated by Texas A&amp;M and conducted by Texas A&amp;M and the Mays Business School in Texas. Pretty rigorous program, people from all around the world put in for it, and I was selected. And fortunately, passed, so, you know. But I thank you all, even for the opportunity to, to attend.
Well, we thank you for looking to further your education and improve our department in any way.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Second, I want to say thank you to staff. The last couple weeks have been very busy for staff transport, especially to get us ready for this lengthy agenda tonight and other things that are going on. So thank you to all of our staff for what you've done. And I want to mention the charters, if you've looked out front, the charters of Freedom, the cement has been poured again by some of our staff, and it looks great. Ms. Hall, you want to bring us up to speed on where we're at on the ceremony?
Ceremony dedication date has been set for October the 12th, 21 at 5:30 PM. October 12th, 2021 at 5:30. We are meeting, the committee is meeting again this, this Thursday to look at the actual agenda and to assign some folks and to figure out who we want on the agenda. I know that Mr. Dry had asked what the status of, and I think I put all of this, or a great deal of this, into an email to you all as of after our last meeting, I sent you all the notes or the minutes from the meeting. Currently, there, if you've been out front, you'll see where there's, it's poured. There's concrete poured, but then there's a place that looks like it's just empty. And that is where the papers will be. Currently, there have only been seven 4x8s purchased and six 8x8s purchased. The folks from Tarsa Freedom are speaking at Rotary in August, isn't that right, Ronnie?
Yes.
And they are going to bring the sheets that you can buy, the papers and all over memory of, they're going to give them out that day. There's a caveat that any paper that is purchased within 30 days before the dedication, so purchased before the 10th or so of September, will be finished and will be put in at the time of the dedication itself. This is going to be an afternoon or a late afternoon event, and it's all coming together real well. We were having a problem at one point about coming up with a date, and we've gotten a commitment from everybody for this, so it's a good thing. We did have, I think there were five, I checked with Wes Stanley's Brooklyn folks, I sent it to you. I think there were five, five students, some graduating, some who had already graduated, and some underclassmen who took part in that. And there will be a plaque with those names on there. There was also someone from Stanley's Brooklyn group that was out there. So those folks will be, have a plaque, one of the plaques giving them our gratification, our words of gratitude, so.
Mr. Ferris?
Just one comment. You know, the event yesterday with the power outage, it's just a small example that I want to use to demonstrate to folks, to remind everybody that something that seems fairly straightforward or not is always straightforward. And it takes a lot to pull off good coordination and restoration of power and continuation of services to keep the public safe. So yesterday, we have a power outage that's not of our own doing, yet we have to respond. So immediately, people think of our electric line crews that have to respond. But there's a lot more than that that goes on into keeping everybody safe and informed. The power goes out, obviously, we have to restore the power. But there are things such as, the fire department has to respond to typically a multitude of false alarms, because they're triggered by the interruption in power service. The police department has to staff intersections and other areas to keep the public safe. There's also potentially alarms that they have to respond to. There's information coordinating in the case of yesterday's event with outside agencies, because what they're doing impacts what we do. There's the informing the public and keeping them up to date on what's going on. So just want to say thanks to everybody that was involved yesterday. And I just, and I use that event as an example of other types of things that we do that take a lot of effort and take a lot of different skills and a lot of people to make the things work as smoothly as possible that, you know, sometimes we don't always think about. So again, thanks to everybody that worked on the issue yesterday and other issues throughout the year.
Mr. Townsend, no comments. Yes, you are.
I just kind of like to add on to that just briefly, that I thought city staff did an excellent job with the social media updates. That was very good. I saw a lot of people sharing that, and that's where people go. I mean, they jumped to that to see what's happening, and I thought our staff was on top of that. It wasn't, it didn't sit there for, you know, a long period of time. It was very current on what was going on. So I do appreciate, as you said, it's, it's not just the linemen, it's, it's a lot of people behind the scenes. And I appreciate that we got our power back so quick.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Aldridge?
Just a, just a quick comment, I've noticed around the city, especially over here on Sackett Street, and then noticed also, look at Old Charlotte, the fresh paint, the striping of the streets looks really, really good. So I want to thank the folks responsible for that. And hopefully, we can get these other parks that may, may have fresh coat, hopefully we can get those. Because as we have more folks coming downtown, I think it just adds to the appearance and just makes everything look a lot nicer, a lot neater. Also want to just say thank you to everybody sitting around the table tonight. We had an unbelievably long agenda, and we got a lot ground covered. And I don't think we rushed through anything, I think we got some good dialogue and made some good decisions. So I appreciate the staff for getting that prepared, and all of us for moving our alarm, so it's good stuff.
Thank you. Ms. Hall?
Add a boy to Public Works, if anybody's been on that little piece of road on Montgomery Avenue between Ridge Street and Moss Springs. We had a big discussion about that probably four, five, six months ago. And they've widened it a bit, and it's not a whole lot, but it sure has made a lot of difference, particularly when you come over the top of that crest, that hill. If you're in the middle of the road, you're not going to run slammed into somebody. A couple of things, some of you might have heard, okay, for those of you that were not at the county cog meeting when Geraldine came to speak about ARP. If you were not there, I don't know, I think she was going to send the handouts to everybody.
She did.
Okay, so you all have them. That same night, Peter Ashudo mentioned to several of us, well, I think he mentioned it actually when he made his announcements, the following issue, and I would like to just offer that to my fellow councilmembers. Keeping in mind that every city resident in the county is a city resident and a county resident. But folks who live outside city limits are not residents of a city, they're only residents of a county, okay? So there's a play on words, but what it gets to is, is that Stanley County does not have any parks of their own. Every public park in this county is owned by a town, a city, or a village, okay? Myzenham, I mean, all the, all the 10 municipalities own their parks. However, those parks are open to anybody that wants to come, walk, play, whatever, be there. And Peter has proposed an idea to the commissioners, that they pull off a pot of money and do a matching grant program with municipalities who are wanting to enhance or enhance something at one of their parks, okay? And if you all have any connection or contact or feel good or comfortable about contacting members of the county commission, he would, I mean, he wants to do this. It's not a whole lot of money, it might be, they earmark $100,000 to, for a county to do that. It could be 10 or however much a city wanted or a town wanted to match, okay? So if you want to talk offline, give me a screen or call one of your county commissioners and say, you know what? That's not a whole lot of money for you all to invest, because county residents use our parks. With that said, I'm going to say thanks to Parks and Rec on what they did Thursday night down at Market Station, like they do every Thursday night until the month of July, through the month of July. month of July, and of the music that went on at City Lake Park on Friday night. The last thing I have is that I have had someone contact me, third party, who is wanting to do a fundraiser to help out our police department, okay? A third party wanting to raise some money to do something nice, they wanted to give bonuses or whatever, but they want to do something for the police department. Now, Ronnie, at one point in time, there was the FOP and that kind of group that could run, that could run through that, but I don't think there's anything such as that anymore. But I will throw that to folks and just to think on because the third party has got access to raising some money.
Any, any donation that goes to the city as a nonprofit, it is tax deductible, so they can go through the city.
But then if it were to go through the city, then going to the police department, would that be, who would make the decision on what to use that money for?
Well, I think council would probably agree with whatever they want to use it for, they need to make a recommendation to us and then council has to make the decision.
Something similar I think happened in the past was there was, I think, a high school student that may have raised some funds to purchase a ballistics vest for one of our K-9 units, in fact, that rings a bell.
It does, it does. Well, I am certain that the person, that my third party might be listening to this tonight, so I will let my third party make, take that and run with it. Thank you.
Ms. Bruton?
I didn't have much, but my comments already been taken several times and I hate to say aloud any one department because they're, I know they're all affected, all the departments are doing great work every day, but most of them never get recognized. Utility Department, Public Utilities, yesterday I was looking at social media because that's where the information was posted about what was going on. The people go in there asking what was going on, other people were taking cut and paste from the website, from our Facebook page and to inform them. And usually I try not to read the comments because usually they're not good, but they were excellent. They were, the comments were surprisingly good and people were aware of what they're doing, they were very complimentary on Public Utilities, there was an appreciation of them being out there, they heard them out there working, so I was, I was pleasantly surprised. I heard that Public Utilities realizes that people are out talking, you know, I should, one, that's it, I don't, I shouldn't say it, someone posted, I really, you know, nobody's answering the phone, someone came back and said, probably I didn't get the power back on. But I thought that was true. The other thing, real quickly, just so you don't want to forget, Ms. Lauer asked about the intersection with First and Second Street, South First and Second Street coming together. I had DOT pulled safety data, in five years, there's been five wrecks, none of them serious, rear end collision, two glancing blows, doesn't even come close to a safety hazard that would cause DOT to put any money into it, so I ask.
Mr. Dry?
Again, I'd like to thank staff for all that you do. We're in a busy time and we are making some hard steadfast decisions up here and you folks make it a lot easier for us to, to go through the information and being able to make a good decision that's going to affect the citizens that we represent and I want to thank you. I also want to say I'm looking forward to Keith's presentation. Tonight was an exciting night and we've been looking at this, the fire department, the fire station back there for a long time and Kevin and I even looked at it trying to decide what to do and to have something that we've talked about since 2013 come right in our back door, that's, that's exciting and I think there's more to come with the business center. Yeah, I wish it was already up because I think we could have put a, I think we could have filled the building, so that's a big decision and, and I'm happy to see that moving forward that I'd like to live a long time to see it, but I think the decisions that we make are going to be beneficial for the folks that will be moving here, the children that will be raised here and coming back to work here and if there's one thing that I think that we've done exceptionally well on is to make these decisions that are going to help the people down the road and I thank each of you for doing that. That's all.
Ms. Lauer?
I'm not much of a volunteer, if you found that out, I am, but there's one thing that we talked about tonight that I want to volunteer for and that is when Kevin gets the call that the grass is too tall, I'll go out and measure. That's all.
I'll entertain a motion that we go into.
One second. I'm sorry, tomorrow, staff, anybody watching, council, water truck's going to be downtown tomorrow at lunch and we are feeding all of the students and faculty and staff from, down at Piper, from the Piper Health Sciences Building.
Who is doing that?
Just some volunteers and the Piper Friends.
Volunteers.
Yeah, oh, it's volunteers and like this money, just passing me money. No, it's, yeah, thank you very much, but no, it's the Piper Friends program that's doing it, but just anybody else, look, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion, we go into closed session for certain North Carolina Journal Statute 143, 318, 11A6 personnel. Motion by Councilmember Lauer. Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, coming out of closed session, I'll bring us back into open session. You want to take a motion? Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Coming out of closed session, we have nothing to report. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until July 12th, our next meeting at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.